Don't you have a meeting yet?
Do I step out in order from over here?
Hi, good evening, Littleton, and welcome to the August 11th, 2025 Select Board Meeting. I am your host and chair tonight, Matthew Nordhaus, as Karen Morrison and Mr. Decost are not able to attend. We have a streamlined agenda and a special, small board for your viewing pleasure. Let's start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Mr. Town Administrator, would you like to read the mail?
Love to. Okay, current vacancies for the town of Littleton, we've got, please, appoint the ones that are appointed by the Select Board, openings on the Agricultural Commission Committee for the Exploration of Real Estate Tax Relief for Seniors, Conservation Commission, Disability Commission, Economic Development Committee, Littleton Community Television, LCTV Advisory Committee, Master Plan Implementation Committee, Permanent Municipal Building Committee, Personnel Advisory Committee, Sustainability Committee, Zoning Board of Appeals. Appointed by the School Committee, they're looking for a member for their Finance Committee, and appointed by LALWD, Littleton Electric Light and Water Department, also one for their Finance Committee. Here we have, sign up to receive public notifications for the town of Littleton. Scan the QR code on the screen to register or go to www.littletonma.org/subscribe. Public safety activity, town meeting changes, community impacts, transportation issues, public health concerns, town events. Stay informed. And we have a gift acceptance form from Liz of EHS, the Council on Aging, and the name of the individual giving the gift is Kristen Grimes, and the amount of $1,664.62 for the TRED Fund, which is a tax relief for the elderly and the disabled.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much for your generosity.
You're here.
And that's it.
Great. Public input.
Bob Brown, 25 Juneup Road. Thanks. Most of you probably knows that the Shaker Lane Building Committee has been meeting for years, working on the proposal coming up for the vote. There's been an outreach committee that was established many months ago. A number of us have been actively participating in those sessions. From that, a number of us started to speak work independently. I think you're familiar with the Yes for Littleton Committee that was formed as a separate PAC. So there's been active discussion within the community, trying to prepare the community, inform the community for this vote. With regard to that, there is a lot of discussion concerned with regard to town meeting. We are recognizing that a matter like a school likely to involve incoming residents with children, people coming to Littleton in order to advocate and come here because of our really quality school system, and therefore this is a real opportunity, biggest vote in terms of dollars that Littleton's going to see. All that to say, there's a good group of people that are working to motivate many people to come to this town meeting, such that I'm here tonight to ask you to consider making accommodations and be prepared for overflow capacity. And in that regard, my proposal that I hope you'll give consideration to is to make a decision, you know, consider what's coming, and make a decision, and then communicate that decision, which I hope will be that you're going to have preparations such that the cafeteria is going to be a space available to be utilized by the public in addition to the gymnasium. I will tell you that I recognize there's costs associated with that. There's staffing, there's clickers, it's an extra layer of, I guess, difficulty, but my understanding is you've been through this before with regard to the, if I'm remembering correctly, the Littleton Common with her heart, regard to the whole gun, you know, type issue in that building. And that was at a time where we didn't have clickers, so that was paper ballot. My understanding is it took a pretty lengthy time to manage all the volume that was there between the two locations. Now we have clickers. My understanding is clickers have been shown in other communities to be available, to be used with regard to reach and setup in two locations, as I'm asking you to consider a gymnasium and a cafeteria. So with all that is recognizing different elements of clickers and a screen and a moderator and microphone, all elements that need to be present there so that people can participate regardless of which location they're in. I want to suggest that for this vote with regard to its emphasis on schools, I might suggest that you might even want to identify that the cafeteria be one that is maybe ideally suited for parents who are bringing in their children, because this vote's going to be a challenge for young residents with little ones, you know, ages seven below. You tell me when you're going to start. I hope you'll start the meeting at six o'clock, not seven o'clock. With the debate that I expect in addition to call the action, the consensus agenda, the pledge, the, you know, National Anthem, I think it's going to be hard pressed to get a vote in before 7:30, and that's bedtime or past bedtime for a good portion of your population of Littleton, who I'm working with a good group of people trying to push people into coming and trying to get them to commit to coming, because that's two parents, that's two votes, it's a big population. So these are all matters that I hope you'll consider, but I also want to emphasize the aspect of consider them and decide in a timeframe that the people that I'm working with can then understand so we can present to the Littleton resident population, these are accommodations that the Select Board is making available for town meetings so that you can, you can participate in this very important decision for, for Littleton. So with that, I appreciate it. I'll probably be back and I'll certainly be looking for your perspectives and trying to work out if there's, let me just say, I've heard aspects of, let's have National Honor Society be ready to babysit, or let's have Park and Rec do a presentation, you know, some activity for the kids, that sort of thing. And I've talked about it with some individuals in the community, and some individuals in the community seem to, if people want to be there, they should accommodate with babysitters. That's resulted in me coming to realization, my generation had babysitters. Our daughter was left with a sixth grader when she was six weeks old as we went to a party. I now have grandchildren, they, that are ages seven and four, soon to be eight and five, they've never had a babysitter, because we have family members that take care of them. And I think that's the way generations have trended. So I can't emphasize enough how young, young people deal with their children in a different way than I dealt with mine. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We, so Diane, in the past, when we've had controversial topics, Diane Correy, our town clerk, has done an excellent job of predicting the size. We have had the cafeteria set up in the past for comment with microphones and screens. I think that we will check with her, and actually, maybe we can, you can follow up and see if we can make sure that the clickers work in two locations.
Sure.
Because that, that was the one item that was troublesome before is the voting. But if we have clickers and everyone can see and hear and debate, I think that, that wouldn't be that big of a lift, actually.
And that we have enough clickers. Maybe, maybe in like a late September meeting, we can have Diane or Tim come and present what the plan is, so that everyone's aware.
Yeah, and I would say we want to target, I want to say we should target mid-September if we want to get word out that there's going to be overflow. We will have, they don't need to know the details of that, but there will be overflow.
Meeting the 12th?
Yeah, if we could have that information available by then, that, yeah, we're going to use, this is going to probably require both. And then the second one, the daycare is a little bit more foggy, obviously. We'd be dealing with Park and Rec potentially, or I know there's a couple of ideas, but I think people might be comfortable with Park and Rec.
Yeah, there was also going to be, I've talked to the superintendent, there's, there's going to be a participation through Camp T.
Okay, so at the library, wherever they do it, I, you know, so I think if we-
Tiger's Den.
Tiger's Den.
Tiger's Den, I'm sorry.
If we get that locked in, so it's an absolute, and then they, then the word can, these groups can start putting the word out so that, oh, I'm not going because there's no, what do you mean? We've already, you know, for every, yeah.
I, I think Diane also mentioned using clickers from other nearby towns.
Yeah, no, it's absolutely part of the plan. Yeah, it is.
Yeah, okay, so we have enough, okay.
Then the other thing, just to, my conversation with the superintendent, that very accommodating, that working to make sure that there were no practices, games, or anything like that for that day.
Yeah, okay, great.
Probably want to plan for parking, too.
Yeah, that's a good point as well. Parking's always going to be.
They park under the tennis courts.
Well, that's why they're talking about no games that night over here at the ballfields and stuff.
Still might be that people need to park here and-
Yeah.
Shuttle down or something, yeah.
Does anyone else want to speak to public input?
Thanks, Ron.
Not, I'll go to Board Member Updates. Mark?
Sure. I attended the Shaker Lane Forum, it was virtual a few weeks ago. Nothing's really, substantial has changed from the last time. They have a little bit more information from MSBA now. It looks like we're going to get potentially a little more money than we anticipated, so that's all good. I was at the Planning Board meeting last week. They talked a bit about 550 King Street. The DEIR is still open for comments this week, I believe?
Fifteenth, I believe.
The 15th, so if anyone wants great bedtime reading, I believe it's 1,200 pages or something. The Planning Board had a lot of, we're focused mainly on the comments around traffic, right? There's questions about the traffic. Representatives from TEC and Lepoli Companies were there, also said things like, they put things into the DEIR that were like, that were like the bigger building things than they're necessarily planning because, because of the way that the process works, right? So I think like there's six-story buildings in there, but they're not necessarily planning on building six stories anymore. I think they're, they're shorter buildings, but that's what they're going for, we'll say worst case or biggest case scenarios through this review process. What else do I have? I attended the Purple Heart Ceremony. Our new VSO did an awesome job on the presentation. I was at the IAGB Flag Raising on Saturday, the Indian, Greater, Indian Association of Greater Boston. It was a great, great event. I wanted to remind everyone that Third Thursday is coming up on the 21st. I believe it's at Fay Park this time, but I'm not 100% positive. And tomorrow there is a Climate Action Plan Forum. I believe it's at the Senior Center at 6:00 PM, so please plan to attend.
Cool. Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, I'll echo pretty much everything. The Purple Heart Ceremony, I attended as well, went, went over well. Thank you. The VSO, and I know the town clerk Diane put an enormous amount of work into that, her office, in making this happen during, you know, the transition of the VSOs and friends of Littleton veterans, we can go right down the line. And it was well attended by, you know, a lot of, you know, LALD, I saw the ADPW, police, fire, and a few other town employees. So it was a great event. It was a kickoff event on, I think, you know, every August 7th, you know, it'll be on a weekend, we'll have a different type of crowd, I think. And it's going to be a, a good Remembrance Day for a lot of families in Littleton that have had loved ones and, as well as the Purple Heart recipients. So that's about it.
Can I add one more? So Hartwell Avenue in Lawrence Street, the DPW went and reconfigured the intersection.
That's right.
They did a good job there.
It's been getting great comments from the residents, so thank you to DPW for all the hard work. It's, it's an improvement. So thank you.
Great. So I had a long discussion with a woman named Emily Schrader, who, who monitors conservation restrictions for LCT. She is going to bring us a proposal for monitoring of the orchard, including a potentially a baseline to get the existing conditions of the orchard as it stands. The, the costs, we haven't talked about specifics, but they, that they're very reasonable, and I think she would, this is what she does for her work in Weston. I think she would be wonderful. The other advantage is she monitors Sarah Doublett, which is obviously adjacent to the orchard, and so having her work for LCT and work for us would be, I think, a big benefit, and I think LCT would be in favor, and it would be a good, a good way to go. So I do have to get her some documentation, some surveys, and get her the APR and stuff, but she should be back with a, with a proposal, I think, this week.
And you're okay releasing the orchard report?
Yeah, that's the next thing I was going to talk about. So I did email around the MAPC report. I have no, I mean, I, we should just release it to the public, I believe. I don't think anyone has any objection to that. If you want, Jim, I will, I can post it on the Orchard Working Group site on the web.
Okay.
But I don't know if we want to do, we probably don't want to do an email blast about it. That's probably too inside baseball for most people, but, but we can let Mr. MacGyver know that it's available on the, on the website.
Understood.
And I'll, I'll just email you when I do that.
Thank you, sir.
I think it should be an agenda item we talk about in a little bit.
The MAPC, yeah, that's right, yeah.
On our next meeting.
With the whole, with the whole board, I would like to discuss, see if anyone has any input on it.
Understood.
And I think that's it for me. All right, on to approve the request from Bikes Not Bombs for the Use of Town Roads on Sunday, September 7th, 2025. There do not seem to be any issues from anybody, so.
Police, fire, we're all on board, so.
Yep. So anybody have any comment? And if not, we should move to approve it.
All right. Move the Select Board Vote to Approve the Request of Bikes Not Bombs for the Use of Town Roads for their Bike-A-Thon on Sunday, September 7th, 2025.
Second.
Moved by Gary, seconded by Mark. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. All right, open the October 28th Special Town Meeting Warrant. Mr. Town Administrator, do you have any?
Uh, no, this is something, so far we've got approximately nine, nine, nine drafts that we're working on, nine different articles that we're working on.
That's good, keep it there.
Yep.
Let's go for 31.
No, keep it in. Nine is right up.
Okay, so with that said, we, as I had brought you up to date before, we've got an internal team to make sure that we're not scurrying around at the last minute, and working with town council, the town, the town clerk, finance team, planning to make sure that we have everything in line. So it's moving, moving smoothly, and we'll be ready.
Fantastic. Any comment? Mr. Wilson?
Nope.
All right, let's go.
Move the Select Board Vote pursuant to Master and Law, Chapter 39, Section 10, entitled Code, Section 41-1, to open the warrant for the Tuesday, October 28th, 2025 Special Town Meeting forthwith, and to close said warrant on Friday, September 12th, 2025, at noon, said town meeting to be held in the Charles Forbes Cave Gymnasium, Littleton Middle School, 55 Russell Street, Littleton, Massachusetts.
Second.
Moved by Gary, seconded by Mark. Roll call vote, Mr. Rhombacher?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
And a chair is an aye as well, so it passes unanimously. The ward is open. Hallelujah. Policy discussion on the use of the town common. Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, this is one, I definitely want the full board here, unfortunately. I know we, two members that aren't, but I, we're going to kick this forward. I think it's important, not just the use of the town common, and not to, not to infringe on First Amendment rights and everything like that. This is, if we, there's no policy. The town doesn't have a usage policy for our town common, so that, that means that 1,000 people could be on the common, or 20 people could be on the common, and obviously, the needs of those size of groups would be significantly different. So we just need to kind of decide how we want to move forward, and that's something I think we need a full board to discuss, and then we can create a policy, some type of policy. And it might not be one where we have permits, it might be one where notification, just so that the Select Board knows, and we're assured that the police know, and just in case something happened, that we know what's going on on the common, as opposed to finding out on social media. That's typically the way we find a lot of these things out. So that's all. And not only that, the flag, it reminded me when we were doing the Purple Heart Ceremony, well, now, that's an, that's a flag that is authorized to be lifted on our flagpole.
Correct.
So our old policy, the one that we shared, doesn't have it. So the new policy at least is going to have to update that. If this board decides to keep the Purple Heart flag underneath the POW flag year round, or if we're just going to continue to raise it up and down on the, on the 7th of August, that's another discussion as well. So just the fact that we get it on there so that we can have it on the flagpole as well, even if for a day. That's it. And I know Karen had some other-
So I, I agree with you a lot on, like, we need a policy inconsistency, but I'd also say that we need to figure out, Fay Park should fall under the same policy inconsistency.
Yeah.
So, and I don't know exactly what the care, custody, and control of Fay Park is. I know the Select Board has kind of relinquished it to Park and Rec, but I don't know what, if that's a formal thing, or an inform, like, we're allowing them to manage it, or they are. So I don't really need, we don't need to get into discussion, but the policy should be the same.
On any town-owned property that there's going to be a significant event?
Well, I think on, well, I think on any property that the Select Board has care, custody, and control of.
Okay.
Because there is town-owned property that we don't have care, custody, and control of, right?
Certainly.
Like the, the parts of the orchard and all that stuff that the Council has. But, but yeah, I think any, any place that we have control of, we should have the same policy.
Okay.
Okay.
And it's, there's a lot of existing policy out there in the state, so it's not, we're not going to have to create-
And you said it's all over the map.
It is.
Yeah.
It is all over the map, depending on the size of community. Some want to see a permit for everything, others, you know, we're not after people having picnics, we're after big events that might be going on in the common that we don't know about. We just want to make sure that people are safe. That's the number one concern, that we're making sure that the proper people know what's going on.
So this, this also goes to something I was thinking when we're doing the Bikes Not Bombs, like approval, like, can we authorize you to approve them but not deny them like we did with liquor licenses?
Yeah.
Right? Like the Bikes Not Bombs and some of these other events, and-
If there's not a permit?
Well, even, yeah, if there's nothing that we have to sign, then why, then do we need to approve it unless you say no?
Correct.
So we should look in, into that as well.
And that, that's, that was what, where I was kind of going, outside, you know, a major event that needs a permit. If it's just-
Yeah.
X group is using the common, police are fine with it, the police are aware of it.
Yeah.
You know, DPW is aware of it, things like that. That's an awareness thing, for me.
Okay, great, thank you.
So more, more to come on that.
So do you want to, while we're at it, do you want to update the flag policy?
Yeah, I think that one's, that one's pretty easy.
That's easy just to add on to the-
Because we're authorized now by the state to, to raise it, as we're a Purple Heart-
So just add a number six?
Yeah.
That says, we like the Purple Heart flag?
And I assume-
Does it have an official name, or is it just the?
The Purple Heart flag.
Yeah, it's the Purple Heart flag. That's what it is, so.
The official Purple Heart flag, probably, if it's the official MIAPOW flag.
Yeah.
So I guess, what, if you can have the language drafted for us, and then we'll all vote on it the next meeting for the, at least for the flag. If we have nothing else to vote on, the flag is added to our policy now to be-
Understood.
On the flagpole.
Great.
That's, thank you for putting that on the agenda.
All right, Mr. Jim Duggan, Town Administrator?
Yes, thank you.
Provide us with an update, please.
Okay. Here, we have a new, we've got the new van for the, for EHS.
Oh.
And it's all electric, and it's parked, you know, back there.
Cool.
And Liz, last week, was, other personnel were being very supportive and helpful to show her about registering it and things of that nature. So DOT, he's got to come and touch it, sit in it, feel it, make sure that the funding was there, and this is what, what has actually arrived. And everyone's, everyone's excited about it.
It's like a cardboard shell with a emetron inside or something?
Exactly, exactly. As I, I took notice, when I was going on a site visit this morning, they are doing their surveying, the DOT surveying the deck that goes over 495 from, on Great Road, so they're doing all that surveying today, which was, which, which was, which is great.
And that, that, that work was unrelated to 550, as I understand it.
Correct.
That was like, that was in the pipeline years ago, or a couple of years ago.
Well, we recently were asked, yes, and we were recently asked for comments, and I know that Mr. Rhombacher gave, exactly, it's going to be widened and put sewer underneath it in a tube, and, yeah, water, and, and work with LALWD. So that's moving along well. So-
I mean, they have that project, they have the project over Beaver Brook Wetlands that was already approved, and they're trying to put a rotary-
And then the rotary's going to go-
So I'm wondering if they're just thinking they're going to try to run this whole thing out at once.
Yeah, do we?
It'd be nice not to have it three times dug up.
Yeah, it'd be nice to get a schedule from them on when they're doing some of this work, yeah.
That's great that they're out there.
Yeah.
I think that Chris told, Chris, that-
Steve.
Steve told us that the rotary was like 2028, 27 or 28.
That's not that far, though, I don't think.
No kidding?
Something, it was, it was a long way out.
Okay.
But I could be wrong, but, anyway.
Today, with Chief McGurty, I went to the Governor's Office today for the signing of the $5 million that had affected area communities for the closure of Shoba Valley Medical Center. This is the overtime and things of that, that we had shared with you before. And so that is something that she, she has signed, and so we're excited about that. The money, because it was, the impact of that was last fiscal year, so that basically the allotment for Littleton is just, is going to fall to free cash. Okay, but there are other communities that, because we are at a full complement, there are other communities that are, will be util, will be utilizing it now for, to hire additional personnel. And there's also the continued conversation during this, during the signing of, this was year one, it was a two-year request. So hopefully we'll be able to get back that. And while there, I had a side conversation with the Governor and thanking her for support of Littleton, and, and putting the plug in for supporting the Max Works Grant that we have, that we have in there. So, and she was, there was appreciation there. Speaking of firefighters and full complement, last Friday I attended the graduation ceremony for, for three more firefighters, and very, it was very well done. We were, what really impresses me is how well we're represented by, by other firefighters from Littleton that are there. You know, absolutely, they're looking sharp, all dressed to the nines and every, and really representing the town really well. Very, really proud of them. And of course, the chief left his vacation day to, to make sure he attended that. Smart move, chief.
And they only send the good-looking ones out?
You can tell, I think the chief has brought a sense of pride and morale. He's definitely, you can feel it when you're in the building.
You really, I mean, you really can. The culture is, is just, I mean, it's, it's fantastic. He's done a great job. Getting to 550, the INRAD was going to be initiated soon, and I signed today with, with, with Tim Pearson to have the peer review done, third-party peer review for that, 550 King Street, and that should be done in about two weeks, according to-
Is it Green?
Conservation Commission, so-
Okay.
Just looking at the, that impact of there.
How significant is that document, when, on a peer review? Is it?
Oh, it's, yeah.
Almost as big as the original, correct?
It really is.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, because you, you know, you're getting a subject matter expert or experts that are, that are going to look at it through an unbiased lens that are going to just tell you the good, bad, and the, you know, warts and all of, of the issue, potential options that, that we would have.
Okay.
Do you know, is there, are, are there things in there that are going to be difficult or- difficult or extremely costly to remediate, or is it like, pretty much run-of-the-mill?
There's going to be some challenges, some creativity, I think, but there's, is it impossible? No.
Okay.
I don't think so. There will be, have to be some compromise.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
So, the other things that, you know, we started internally, we have a core of, of, of employees doing the internal training to areas, and we, so the accounting office is going to host two training sessions regarding the AP process, and munis, purchase orders, change orders, so we're doing that internal, over the course of Monday, I'm, I'm sorry, Wednesday, the 20th, and Monday, the 25th, so here in this room right here, so it's great stuff. And, and if individual departments need continued attention, then, you know, the team will give it to them, but a lot of support, it's really well done. Let everyone know that because of the presence, the increase in the presence of ticks, Board of Health, Francis, the Health Director, purchased 150 tick kits to have available for the residents free of charge, and they'll be available at the Board of Health, or the center on Shattuck, and when, there will be a press release and media alert when those are available.
What, yeah, what's in it?
It's basically like a little, looks like a, you know, it's about the size of a little sewing kit, like a deck of cards, and in there, it's, it's-
I have one, not from there, but I've seen it.
Things to pick a tick off.
Oh, okay, it's like removers?
Safe removal.
Okay.
Something to that effect, let's just go with that. And, since people don't have lighters anymore.
Basically, yeah.
Right, exactly.
The app doesn't quite do it.
In preparation of the FY27 budget, we-
Jim, before you continue, thank you for, the Nile, West Nile virus.
Yeah, thanks for that, notification.
Notification, I received, I, I know-
Good.
That was, that was significant, a lot of people were, are obviously concerned, and still concerned.
Right, right. And lastly, we have, in preparation of the FY27 budget, the Finance Director is, we're working through the, the budget message, the draft of the proposed budget message, and we're also in preparation with health insurance. We are budgeting for a 20% increase again, but worst-case scenario, so we need, we're going to also work with Meyer and the, our internal insurance advisory council, to see if we can do, do some plan, plan design, different plan design, that's going to, that options that we can lessen the, the impact to the FY27 budget, so, we will keep you apprised of that, that is a, continues to a moving target, and we will not, nobody will understand from Meyer what the actual rates are going to be until mid-February, so our budget will be in print, we'll already have distributed, we'll have already started the meetings, so that number that's going to be in there is a working number, just to let everyone know that 20% increase.
And Jim, are we negotiating with the region, is this a region-based, or is this specific town-based negotiations?
Specific to us.
Okay.
Okay, so, so the IAC's got representative from the different unions, and non-union, and things like that, so, we'll, and as part of the initial, we had the initial meeting on Thursday, and it's, we've got to get creative, that was basically my message, we, we have to, we can't afford this anymore.
The increase last year?
Seventeen.
Seventeen or eighteen, seventeen or eighteen?
It was nineteen.
Ended up being nineteen.
Ended up being nineteen.
Okay.
Yeah, so-
Sustainable, running level.
Right, right, and so if you think of that, if, you know, the upcoming FY27, we're in now the 26 and 25, over the course of three years, you're probably looking at an increase of 50%.
Yeah, right.
Right?
Yeah.
So, to your point, Mr. Wilson, it's not sustainable, at all, so, anyway, that, that's it.
Great, thank you.
Can you give a quick update on 36 King?
Great point, okay. The grid, so the, the, the system was re, was repiped, if you want to call it, the flow test was done, our building commissioner is, is good with everything, the grid for the drop ceiling has been installed, instead of doing sheet rock in the ceiling, in the event, we have to get to that area again, that was the idea of, that was a suggestion of the facilities manager, Eric, and at this point, they're still getting all the financials for what's going to be covered by the insurance, what's going to be covered by, by us, we still have the $50,000 deductible out of the gate for the, for the, for the insurance, so we're, at this point, we're looking at approximately $80,000, that's going to, going to be our responsibility, and we are, so we're looking to have the work done optimistically by the end of the week, so they'll be back to as much as possible normal for, for next week.
But there are some people in there-
Oh, yeah.
Now, on the first floor, is that right?
Right, exactly, and it's, it's completely safe, all floors are completely safe, they've got, that's been Henry and the Fire, and the Fire Prevention Deputy Chief Coffee, they're completely satisfied, they, the facilities need to get Deputy Chief Coffee some confirming documentation, but it's completely safe and fire retardant, and so we've got the systems up and flowing.
Your, your updates have been great, too, on that, thank you.
Can we, can we encourage the school department and Park and Rec to hold an open house at some point, it would be nice to-
Yeah, I think that was going to be a plan on them, you know, so.
Right, that's been, that's been a pretty ongoing discussion of win-win-win.
Yeah, so, absolutely. Yeah, we need to have something so people can see what their money was spent.
And what's available to the public in there, the, you know, the-
Yep, absolutely, okay.
Will do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, last item is approve the minutes of July 28th, 2025.
Mark?
You, Gary?
That was good.
All right, let's have a motion.
Move the Select Board vote to approve the meeting minutes from the Select Board meeting on July 28th, 2025.
Second?
Moved by Gary, seconded by Mark, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?